You ready?
Yep.
Erin, you ready?
Ready. Hi, welcome. Thank you so much for being here tonight. Ask you to silence your phones, please. It was queued perfectly. Welcome tonight to September 9th, 2025 Graham City Council Meeting. Call this meeting to order. I have the privilege of introducing Pastor Rodney Fox from Children's Chapel. You could please come forward. Children's Chapel is celebrating their 150th anniversary this month, and he's going to lead our invocation tonight. And so I ask everyone to please bow your heads.
Thank you so much. Let us pray. Eternal God, we come this evening in the name of Jesus to give you thanks and praises for this beautiful day. We thank you, God, for this allow, just allowing us to assemble here in this council meeting. Heavenly Father, we ask that you bless our mayor and bless all of the councilmen and women, and bless our officers and members of this great city. And oh, Lord, we invite you into this place, that oh, God, that you may touch our hearts and our minds, that when decision times come or decision making, that we all know that there's a worth of every human being. Now, God, continue to bless this great city. And Lord, we thank you for your grace and travel mercy here. We pray that we get the same going home. We ask this in all blessings. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. And if you'll please stand for our Pledge of Allegiance. Hey, I want to ask Mr. Fox and any of the members of the church, if you guys, any of you, if you have any deacons or anyone that would like to come forward, I'd like to recognize you. Children's Chapel, as I said earlier, is celebrating their 150th anniversary. It is located in the historic building there on Harden Street.
Yes.
And we are really excited about this and what they bring to Graham, so. Hey, David. Hey, neighbor. Were you? I hadn't seen you in forever. You were?
She went out of town.
No, no.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yep, Flint Mara's birthday. That was, he is a catbird, it, catbird. So, this is a proclamation honoring Children's Chapel United Church of Christ for 150th anniversary. Whereas Children's Chapel Christian Church was organized in 1875 by the Reverend J.W. Wellens. And whereas in 1876, the first church was built on donated land, and a two-room house was also built as the church parsonage. And whereas on June 13th, 1883, additional land was purchased, and the church was later rebuilt in 1911 on its present site. And whereas Children's Chapel has continued to advance and grow over the years, experiencing significant additions and renovations. And whereas in 1966, Children's Chapel Christian Church joined the Southern Conference of the United Church of Christ, and their name became Children's Chapel United Church of Christ. Whereas Reverend Rodney Fox, who is a legacy here in his own right, has been leading Children's Chapel UCC since May of 1991. And whereas Reverend Fox's dedication and service continue as he encourages his congregation to serve God, the church, and the community, spreading the love of Christ in ways that will positively touch many lives. Now, therefore, I, Jennifer Tally, have the esteemed honor as mayor of the city of Graham hereby to honor you, the 150th anniversary of Children's Chapel United Church of Christ, and proclaim Saturday, September 13th, 2025, as Children's Chapel UCC Day within the city, and urge all citizens of Graham to pay special tribute to this church on the occasion of the 150th anniversary presented this day, September 9th, 2025. Awesome. You're a preacher, so you have to say a few words. You're, it's mandatory.
Oh, not a sermon, but this will talk. First and foremost, I certainly want to thank you, Mayor Tilly, for having us here and for the city of Graham to give us such an honor. We find ourselves in a good city with a lot of good people. And we are, you said it well, that we are here to serve God and serve our people here in the community abroad. And to let the whole community know, you're welcome to visit Children's Chapel on 334 East Harden Street at any time, at 11 o'clock for worship service. But again, we thank the council. Amen.
Church, I went there for, on a sad occasion for Mr. Walker's funeral.
That's right.
And came in, just, wow, just amazing. Very, very, very beautiful.
Yes, I said, don't make them like that anymore.
No.
And I thank God for the congregation we have, officers and members there, for they take pride in it, and they've up kept it, kept the property even before I got there. And so we're proud of, we really are proud to be in the city.
Yes, well, thank you so much for being a part of our city. If anyone wants to learn more about Children's Chapel, if any, if anyone would like to learn more about Children's Chapel, we had our Graham Historic Committee actually put together a presentation working with the elders of the church to put a presentation together at the Graham Historical Museum. Brian, I think the hours of that would be open on the weekend. Yeah, Friday and Saturday, 10 to 2, so please go out there and check that out, that display. It has kind of the whole history of Children's Chapel and many of the significant figures here in Graham, and it's an excellent tribute to their huge celebration, what an accomplishment. And it is a beautiful church. If you have the opportunity to visit there, I highly recommend. He would love to, love to have you, and I appreciate you speaking. You had a big audience, so. You had to do that.
But then I want to thank several members standing with us today, our first lady of the church, Elizabeth. Wave your hand, honey. But we thank God for the strong members that we have at Children's Chapel. We're just proud. Proud of the church, proud of the city. Thank you.
Thank you for all you do. We appreciate you being here.
I think I.
Bye, honey. Thank you so much for being here. Appreciate it so much. Oh, okay, sorry. Hey, it's also my honor to please ask Jim Albright, former council member. And Jim, do you have a group that would like to come forward? I wish I was better Spanish. I would love to be able to read this, but I'm not that good in Spanish. I got an A in it in high school. Okay, the proclamation here, September 15th through October 15th, we hereby do proclaim in the city of Graham National Hispanic Heritage Month. Whereas each year, Americans observe National Hispanic Heritage Month from September 15th to October 15th by celebrating the histories, cultures, and contributions of American residents who ancestors came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and South America. And whereas this observation started in 1968 as Hispanic Heritage Week under President Lyndon Johnson, and expanded by President Ronald Reagan in 1988 to cover the aforementioned 30-day period was enacted into law on August 17th, 1988. And whereas the day of September 15th is significant because it is the anniversary of independence of Latin, of, for the Latin American countries of Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua. In addition, Mexico and Chile celebrate their Independence Days on September 16th and 18th, 2025, respectively. Also Columbus Day, or Dia de la Rosa, which is October 12th, 2025, falls within these 30 days. And whereas approximately 18.7% of the population of Graham, and I believe that is being shortchanged, I believe it's much more larger than that, is of Hispanic origin, at least according to the school system. And whereas the Graham City Council hereby recognizes and supports the theme for this year's National Hispanic Heritage Month, Collective Heritage Honoring the Past and Inspiring the Future. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Jennifer Tally, and the Graham City Council do hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th as National Hispanic Heritage Month. Furthermore, we encourage citizens to recognize and celebrate the individuals who have come to Graham from various Latin American countries and contributions they are making to the community. This, the 9th day of September, 2025, signed the mayor of Graham. Thank you so much. Hey, and let's have you, would you like to say something, Jim? Okay, because there is a big celebration in which you can partake in coming up, and we want you all to be there because it is lots and lots of fun. Yes, of course, every, every year.
Yes, I have seen you. Everybody, thank you for having us today. We really welcome everyone to come and celebrate with us. The Hispanic Heritage Month is not only about celebration of the contribution of Latinos and Hispanic in the area. It's really about, it's about the celebration of community. It's about the celebration of getting to know each other, getting to know our neighbors, understanding how the city and the county is changing every single day, and how every single new member of the community, as well as those who have been here for many generations, have a contribution to each of us and each of our growth and development as a city. So not only I would like to invite all of you personally as the chair of the committee, but I really want you just to come and meet new friends, have friends come with you, bring your family. We work very hard on putting this together every year. And the city of Graham has been an amazing, amazing sponsor, supporter, and ally in this process. So we have nothing but celebrations every single day. And what an amazing Sunday to do it in downtown Graham. So September 28th, from 12 to 8, is free to everybody. We will have live performances coming from Brazil, Colombia, Mexico, Chile, Ecuador. Amazing food and craft. Just come and have a great time. I would like to see you all there. Okay? Thank you.
My family from Venezuela absolutely loves it. They love it. They absolutely love it, and they come every year. So, and there's so much to do there. You guys will see authentic food. And they, they make it, you know, sometimes you go to these markets and they're not necessarily so authentic. But you learn history. You learn, they have, they had displays up that some of the school kids had done. But you learn so much while you're there, while having a great time. The dancers, the authentic wardrobes that the women have on and the men have on, it's absolutely fantastic. You guys will not, it's, you will not be disappointed, so please come out if you can.
One more thing I want to say, we have people coming from different cities in the state to come to visit Alamos for the first time. So another thing we want to do is to make sure that the, the festival itself attracts new people to come and see how amazing we are as a community. So we're having people from Greensboro, Raleigh, Cary, Charlotte area coming to check us out. We invite them, but we also want them to come and see what we have available. Many of them had never been in the city, and they came to us and tell us they want to come back. So that's another amazing thing we want to bring back.
Thank you. Okay, great. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thanks. Have a great time. Hey, now, I'd like for you to plea, I'd like to ask for you to please have Fire Chief Tommy Cole come up. And we're going to be recognizing Graham firefighters, Graham police officers, the city staff, and a Graham resident for their rescue efforts during Tropical Storm Chantel.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Thank you, Chief.
City manager. What a, what a fantastic way to kind of move into this presentation. I'd like to say on behalf of the Fire Department to Children's Chapel, congratulations. What a, what a great accomplishment. And to our Hispanic festival coming up, we, we participate, us and police, we both are very active into that. And I'm going to mention a little bit about our Hispanic community during my presentation. So, again, good evening. I'm here today to recognize the incredible response of our community during Tropical Storm Chantel on July the 6th, 2025. This storm created dangerous conditions, but thanks to the courage, dedication, and quick thinking of our responders, and citizens' lives were protected and residents were safely evacuated. Before I go any further, I just want to kind of give you a brief situational awareness of what was happening that day, about 4:00 or 5:00 o'clock. Well, earlier in the day, we noticed that the storm was kind of going to move up through our area. We saw that Moore County, it started to get, to get a lot of rain, but the storm looked like it was going to move on pretty quickly. We, we anticipated getting rain, heavy rains. So, not out of the normal for, for this area. Well, guess what? The storm sat on top of Graham and Meban and eastern, northeastern Aliments County. So about 5:00, 4:30, 5:00, we responded to our first incident on I-40 for a wreck. It was storm-related just because of the heavy rains. While we were there, I started to notice how the weather conditions were changing, the skies were looking, and realized that, you know, 37 years in this business, you start to recognize when things don't look exactly right. I said, man, you know, this, something just doesn't feel right. So we, we handled the incident on I-40, and we started to get calls at that point for Harden Street. Harden Street floods, we all know that. We have those areas of Harden Street that we, we know with any amount of substantial rain that's going to flood. So we started to respond. Police had already got there. They were starting to set up roadblocks. I met with Corporal Hopkins. He was the senior officer on duty that day. And we started to say, hey, you know, this looks like it's going to be an event. Let's go ahead and start reaching out for road closures and that sort of thing. What we did not realize was we flooded in areas that Graham, I've heard, I haven't lived here all my life, but areas of Graham flooded that had never flooded before. We saw areas, massive amounts of rain. And we all know with development, it's going to push water in different places that we've never seen before. And we, we expect that, but we saw areas that were flooding that we just didn't expect to flood. And then we realized real quick, we were cut off from everybody else around us. We, we couldn't get places. We, we were flooded. Now, I'll give you an example of that. While sitting on Harden Street, we got a fire alarm call in a new neighborhood off of South Jim Minor Road, Raleigh's Meadow. Where I was sitting at, it would have took me eh, six to eight minutes to get there on a normal day. 25 minutes later, I finally got to the house, and I, and I knocked on the door, and I asked the lady, I introduced myself to her, and I said, I guess you thought we weren't coming. And she said, no, I knew it was bad weather. It's, it's, I think this is a weather-related incident. And she had a water leaking into her smoke alarms, and that's what set them off. But had there been an actual fire, 25 minutes would have been a terrible amount of time to have to get there. And in fact, I canceled the engine because the engine couldn't even get to it. I could get to it in my pickup. I could, the engine couldn't even get there. So we realized we had a catastrophic event happening in Graham. So at that point, it was all hands on deck, right? We started making the phone calls we needed to make. We started making preparations. We just, we weren't prepared because it was catastrophic, right? We were prepared for the event, and we did what we had to do. We had, we, we needed more resources from outside of Graham. And we, we realized real quick, we, we were blocked off from help. So as, as I move forward to this, I'll, I'll talk a little bit more about it. So first, I want to commend the members of the Graham Fire Department and the Graham Police Department. Our firefighters and officers worked tirelessly in hazardous conditions, performing rescues and ensuring that our community remained as safe as possible. Their bravery and professionalism are a model for all of us. So let me talk a little bit about that. So we fight fires, we make rescues, we run med calls. Water, lots and lots of water is dangerous, and we don't do swift water rescue, right? Our rescue squad does, who's in town, but had already been pulled out of town to Meban for, for some other initial types of, of rescues. So our emergency management division for the county has started calling us with water teams from outside the county. They have to travel. They have to, they have to ramp up, get their stuff together, and travel to us. Our firefighters and police officers did what they had to do to start making rescues. I don't know if I should tell the interim police chief this or not, or Sergeant Raines, he, Neil was off. But I saw officers taking their gun belts off, locking them in their car, and getting in the water and making rescues, right? Because we had to. We had no choice, right? And, and when I called for emergency management to send us help, they said, okay. There was no timeframe, right? I called back and said, we need help. We, we gotta rescue people. I said, our firefighters and police officers are starting to make decisions they should not have to make, right? Putting ourselves in danger of swift water to make rescues, to save people, and taking a chance on losing our lives, right? So we shouldn't have to do that. But hey, we did what we had to do. So I want, I want to recognize our firefighters and police officers, and I'm going to call them up here in just a moment. I would like to especially thank Public Works Director Burke Robertson, who went above and beyond by operating a front-end loader, and I'll stop there for a minute. We initially called Burke and said, hey, we need road closure signs so we can keep people from driving in flooded waters. You'd be surprised the citizens that will take, take a chance and drive in flooded waters after seeing vehicles being swept off the road. They do it anyway, so we needed barricades. Quickly, we realized we needed help, right? Who do we call? We call Burke. We need help, you call Burke. Burke's got tools. Burke's got stuff. So Burke went above and beyond by operating a front-end loader with firefighters in the bucket, rescuing residents who could not escape the rising floodwaters. His willingness to take direct action in the field exemplifies leadership in its truest form. Similarly, we had to figure out, when we made rescues and pulled people out of their homes, where were they going to go? The county started setting up shelters. We had to be able to get our citizens from here to there. Who do I call? Brian Fawcett. Brian's got buses. I called Brian. Brian, I need you. He said, tell me where and when, and how do I get there in this situation? So I want to recognize Brian, who stepped into a critical role by driving our city recreation bus to transport citizens to local shelters, ensuring they had a safe place to go during the storm. His efforts provided both safety and reassurance to those in need. As we, as we just mentioned, our community coming together. One of the areas that we identified real quick that was going to be flooded was our mobile home park on Darryl Drive, okay? So we, we responded to Darryl Drive. We got there. There was a lot going on. A lot of people out in, in the streets trying to figure out what was going on. That's a community that helps their own, right? They were trying to do that, but they were cut off from the waters as well. That's, that's where I saw our police officers in hip-level water, trying to walk to these mobile homes to rescue these folks. So I was like, how are we going, how are we going to do this? And I realized real quick, guess what? I don't speak Spanish either, Mayor. You might speak it better than I do. I knew we had a language barrier. I have no idea what that means. We had a language barrier. What a time to have a language barrier when you're trying, when, when it's chaos, right? And we're trying to figure out what to do. You know, when you walk into a crowd, you always can pick out that person who's that leader, whether formal or informal. And I realized real quick, I had to find that person. And a lady named Brenda Cruz, who was here, was in that crowd, and she was directing things. I could tell that, that that was my person, right? So I quickly went to Brenda, and I said, Brenda, I need your help. We're here to rescue folks. We don't want anybody else in the water. And when we rescue them, we're going to put them on a bus and carry them to a shelter, right? Brenda said, I'll take care of it. And she, she worked her magic. She started doing her thing. And she started getting people together and working together, which was amazing. One of the things we also didn't realize was, in our current political climate, our Hispanic community is a little hesitant about going to places where they have to be ID. Fully understand. Did not expect that, right? So then it was, what do we do now? Brenda helped me through that. She helped me understand what was going to happen, what we were going to do next, and how this community was going to respond to what was going on. So I also want to recognize Brenda, who was a citizen who assisted translating and comforting the residents of Darryl Drive, ensuring they understood that help was on the way and that they would be safely evacuated. Her compassion and initiative remind us that heroes can come from every corner of the community. The response to Tropical Storm Chantel was a true team effort. From first responders to city leaders to citizens, everyone played a vital role in protecting our community. I'm proud to serve alone as such dedicated and selfless individuals, and I thank them for their extraordinary service in response to that, that event. I hope it never happens again, but it is likely to, right? So we prepare ourselves. But I know this community will pull together. We will do the things we need to do, and we will be resilient and, and survive these, these types of events. So I'm going to call up the responders that responded. And when you come up, if you'll stand in order that I call you so I can hand you out a certificate with the, the correct name on it, that would be great. So, let's see here. From the Fire Department, Captain Kevin Squires, Captain Chris Stokes, Captain Jason Moore, Lieutenant John Harrington, Engineer Chase Drill, Engineer Cole Hester, Firefighter Ethan Britt, Firefighter Gavin Squires, Firefighter Jacob Churchill, and Firefighter Zach Odoms. Some of our folks could not be with us tonight, but we will surely recognize them. And from our Police Department, Sergeant Samuel Kimball, Corporal Justin Hopkins, Officer Gabriel Anmet, Officer Kayla McNeely, Officer Austin Riley, and Officer Reed Terrell. From Graham Public Works, Director Burke Robertson, Graham Recreation and Parks, Director Brian Fawcett, and to my Citizen of the Year, oh, Jenna, come on up, Jenna, Jenna Tucker. Oh, my goodness, Jenna, I may not have a certificate for you, but I'll get you one. Either way, I want to recognize you. Jenna, I'm sorry. And to my Citizen of the Year, as I was speaking, Ms. Brenda Cruz. Brenda, please. And to my Citizen of the Year, as I was speaking, Ms. Brenda Cruz, Brenda, please. Yeah. Come with me around just a little bit.
Come on, need a picture.
Yeah, let me, let me, let me, let me read this, read this to you. Everybody gets a certificate of recognition. A recognition of the extraordinary bravery, selfless service and unwavering commitment to the safety and, uh, safety of others. During Tropical Storm Chantel on July 6th, 2025. Your courage and quick actions in the face of danger embody the highest values of dedication, service and heroism. Your actions not only protected lives, but also inspired all those around you. On behalf of the City of Graham Fire Department, we extend our deepest gratitude and honor. And then their name is on it and awarded this date. Also to, um, the police officers, our Public Works and Recreation Director. And also to Brenda, um, I have these, uh, Fire Chief Coins, they're, they're collectible, uh, challenge coins, as you probably have heard them called. But, um, I don't give these out too often, but I give them out when it's appropriate. And on, on today, I feel it very appropriate to say thank you, uh, for the, the service that all of these individuals did. My firefighters don't get one, they probably already have one. If they don't, I will get them one, I don't give them multiples, but, uh, to my police officers, our, our directors and to Brenda, uh, you will also receive a challenge coin. So. I'll give her another one. I'm sorry. I knew y'all were gonna do it on purpose, didn't.
I gotta have y'all move in. So taller ones on the back, shorter ones on the front. Try to slide. Bobby, Bobby. Perfect. Jennifer, you can stay down here if you want to. I mean, you go. Anywhere. Make sure I got everybody's space, you right there, this other, there you go. Sorry, perfect. Okay, I got you. Awesome.
Mayor Tally, if I may just add, obviously Chief Cole didn't mention himself, but I would be remiss if I did not mention that he was absolutely there with members of his department. Responding just the same as everyone else did and, and worked a tremendous number of hours to help the citizens of Graham. So he absolutely deserves recognition as well.
Thank you so much. Yes, on behalf of the Graham City Council, we appreciate all of our first responders and especially you, Cole, for your leadership. We appreciate it very much, Chief Cole. And, um, it's amazing what a private citizen, when called to the challenge, can step up and do. And, um, so we appreciate her as well. And thank you for arranging this and getting this together, thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you for your support, always, um, without it, you know, we, we, we would struggle, but, uh. You know, our, our folks work hard, our Police and Fire Department and really all of our city workers, we work so close, hand in hand to, to make things happen. And this is just another example of, of how that happens, but thank you again for the opportunity.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Moving on to our consent agenda. I'm gonna read this aloud. A, to approve the August 12th, 2025 City Council Meeting Minutes. And August 26th, 2025 Special Closed Session Meeting Minutes to approve a resolution. Awarding a police badge and service sidearm to retired Assistant Police Chief Rodney King. To approve a resolution authorizing the submission, submission of an application to the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program for the Travora Street Stormwater Mis- Mitigation Project. To appoint Tim Allen to the Graham Historic Museum Advisory Board to fill an unexpired term ending June 30th, 2027. To approve a budget amendment transferring $20,000 of federal drug forfeiture revenue to the Police Department for reuse. To approve a budget amendment transferring 3,000 of state drug forfeiture revenue, um, to the Police Department for use. G, to approve a budget amendment for $250,000 for repairs at the wastewater treatment plant. $84,000 for repairs at Bat Creek, uh, that's pump station number two. And $140,000 for water u- usage payment to Burlington due to the impact of Tropical Storm Chantel. H, to approve a request to close parking spaces on East Elm Street on September 13th, 2025, from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. For the Big Fall Sea. For the Fall Big Sea Community Christian Concert. I, to approve a request for Alamance County Veterans Services for the Veterans State Parade on November 8th, 2025. To include the closure of McCaden Street, pending approval from NC DOT for closures of state roads. J, to approve a request from First United Methodist Church of Graham for a Fall Carnival Event on October 4th, 2025. Located on East Market Street between North Main Street and North Marshall Street from 2:00 PM until 9:00 PM. That includes setup and cleanup. K, to adopt an amended traffic schedule to restrict weight limits for Oneida and Market Streets. Um. L, to approve the Drinking Water Emerging Contaminants Construction Project and the 2025, 2020. Sorry, 2025, 2035 Water Capital Improvement Plan Resolutions. And M, to approve tax releases in the amount of $3,069.14. Is there any questions from the council in regard to this consent agenda?
Mayor, I'm the commission, do we approve?
Any questions first? Okay. Um, Megan, could you explain to the council E and F, what those drug forfeiture monies will be used for?
Sure, item E, the federal drug forfeiture money is for training for, um, Police Department employees. And item F, the state drug forfeiture fund is to replace broken gym equipment.
Okay. Anyone from the audience that hear, addressing specifically any of these consent agenda items? Hearing none, do I hear a motion from the floor to accept or reject the consent agenda as written?
Mayor, make a motion, do we approve as written?
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Um. Public hearing. We have a public hearing tonight to amend the development ordinance regarding minor subdivisions. A public hearing has been scheduled to consider an amendment to the Development Ordinance, Article 8, Section 10.337. To update the existing language regarding minor subdivisions. I'd like to recognize our Assistant City Manager, Aaron Holland.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Um, as you just stated, this was a request to update the existing language for our minor subdivisions. Our minor subdivision language currently allows for four or less lots. And the request from council was for us to look at, uh, changing it to five lots. Uh, staff did add in a timeframe requirement. Um, as well as addressing the parent parcel so that we can eliminate that confusion whenever individuals coming in would like to split property. They know whether to include or not include the parent parcel in the total number. Uh, planning board recommend approval of the. Recommend approval of the amendment with a 6-0 vote. But they did, uh, ask that the removal of the timeframe requirement be taken out of that language and to change public street to public right-of-way. Which staff does agree with all of that they proposed. And.
Staff agreed?
With, uh, taking the timeframe out, yes.
But not the. At the timeframe and the, um.
The, the wording of public street to public right-of-way?
Uh huh.
If that's, if that's what council would like. But we didn't have an issue with.
I thought the staff did have an issue with the time.
No.
Okay.
I mean, we, we had it in there initially, but as far as the integrity of the, the language. We're, we're fine with it because we can address the concerns we had in other areas of the ordinance.
Okay, so the difference between minor subdivisions and major subdivisions. Um, when you get to over an acre, you start having to do, um. A lot more with erosion control because you're disturbing the ground more than an acre. And City of Graham really doesn't have much, um. Control over that, it's a state requirement. So, but what we do control is minor subdivisions. And the issue that we have is that we have a lot of pressure from the state. Um, to. Um, encourage, um. Housing. And to encourage permits being built. Um, there was a bill earlier this year that was proposed that would take away. Basically 90% of what we do. I don't even know why we would even need to come as a, as a council really anymore. Um, I basically don't want. Effectiveness of it would be that residents, current local residents would have no input, uh, locally on whether housing development was approved or not approved. And of course, we went to our local legislators and the, also so did the, um. Um. Local Government Commission. And who else? There was an attorney from League of Municipalities, um, contacted and we had some conversations about. Not having that move forward. And so, um, that's what ended up happening, thank goodness, we were able to stop that. And I will say that, um, Graham, I feel like played a key role in those discussions. Um, they weren't even speaking to each other, um, until we initiated a call, to my understanding. And so when you have two people that are very adamant about what they want and nobody's speaking to each other. That lends for bad legislation. So, um, I was very happy to report that we were able to not have that move forward. Um, but, um, with all the publicity for North Carolina as a state and for Alamance County. Um, we have a lot of people that want to, um, be located here. Because as a result of our tax rate, um, we have, um, I think the second lowest in the county. Um, it's 29.309, sorry, 3099 now. Um. And that was lowered from. Last year was. Two years ago, two years ago was from 40. 45, yeah. So big significant change, especially if you don't, even if you own just, uh, personal property. So there's a lot of pressure for people to want, when you look at other communities around us, um, their tax rate's a lot higher. So have a lot of people that are wanting to move here. So in speaking with staff, uh, speaking with our Public Works Director. Um, the cheapest thing to the city, because this city council, I think unanimously, um. Uh, wants controlled growth. We don't want to have, um, I think a lot of us got elected because there was a lot of, um. Apartments, multifamilies and all that being built, uh, prior to our tenure on the council. And, um, uh, I think we've only approved one townhouse, uh, community, believe, um, since being on the council. Um, but the thousand houses, you know, those are, those are something that have, hasn't been passed by this community. Um, and speaking with our staff, Burke and the like. The most affordable thing for the city to do to encourage as far as development is one of the questions I was asked by our legislators. Um, uh, Dennis Riddell was, what are you doing to encourage development? Um, and I said, well, we want controlled development, we don't want to have. Um, you have to grow slowly because you can't increase services, uh, substantially. Because you have a lot of houses that are under construction and you don't have, um. Uh, you know, trash trucks or delivery services or police or fire or whatever to service those locations. So you have to grow, um. In, in, in stages. So, uh, one of the things is infill. And I think this definitely addresses a lot of parcels that exist here in Graham that a lot of developers would say. It's gonna be too expensive to develop that parcel. Um, because it's only gonna give me four lots right now currently. And so this, the staff has recommended going to five lots. I wanted to hear what the council felt about six lots. Um, because I, I talked to several developers, local developers, not outside developers, but I did, uh, reach out to several local developers. Um, and when you get to six, that's when you start getting in that acre. So at that point, um, the state provisions are going to take over anyways. Um, but for somebody that is trying to develop a parcel and they're trying to, um. Make it financially feasible to do so, and you're gonna take one parcel and divide it into six lots. That would be considered a minor subdivision. And, um, I know I had heard from several people about, uh, you know, if you have a development and it already doesn't have, um. Sidewalks in the rest of the development. Uh, we're talking about those kind of things going forward and really looking at things to fix things like what we had in Riley Meadows with the roads being too closed. And cars parking on the street. I just got a, uh, email and sent that on to Aaron about that yesterday. Um, for the people at Riley Meadows that are upset about the development that was approved. We voted against that, um. But, uh, they have a real problem out there, um, with parking. And, um, her front yard looks like a parking lot. I mean, really, it's, it was, I think I counted seven cars just in front of her house. And, uh, it was, you know, you can't even get down, the two cars cannot go down that street. Um, without cars parked on both sides, there's no way. Um, and a trash truck, I don't even think could get down it with the two cars parked on both sides. Um, so anyways, that's something that we're dealing with and trying to make sure it doesn't happen moving forward. But I, I wanted to hear from the other council as to what they think, thought about, what the staff thought about going from five to six. Or whether we want to try it at five, um, and, and see how that goes.
My only question would be, how would that affect what it would cost the city in terms of water taps or this type of thing? Would, would that affect, that have a direct effect on what it costs the city?
Uh, so, so yes, um. A- a- as it currently stands, you know, the developer would essentially pay. I want to say our tap fees are like 2,000, either 1,500 to $2,000, uh, without looking at the fee schedule, but somewhere around there. Um, but if, if there, and then we go and we do the taps. Uh, it's an incentive because the actual cost, you know, labor and materials and all that, it's more than that. Um, it, it can be. Up to $10,000 to do a tap. So, you know, a lot of that is put on us because essentially they're only paying the 1,500 to $2,000. And then, you know, we're basically covering the rest. I guess the concern that we have by going up too much, too many numbers. Is what, what does that look like on our staff to. Put so many taps in, into, uh, development before we should really ask whether or not that should be a developer's responsibility? And I think. And I think we like five. If that's going to be a number that we go up from, from four, um, looking at jurisdictions in the area, they range from three to as high as six. Uh, not many go up to six, but the general sweet spot has tended to be around that four and five lot number. Uh, so we were just trying to stay consistent in that particular number area there. Um, I do, I do think it, it does kind of put our guys into a tough spot whenever they're having to do too many of these taps and having to eat that cost. So that's the only concern.
We talked about that. I asked if there was a way that we could write this, um, revision to where we didn't, like that we said, we give you a credit up to twenty-five hundred dollars per tap. That if we can do that, but that, you know, that's the, that's the problem with writing development ordinances is that not every parcel, you know, when they're, when you're writing it, you're thinking of that perfect situation where you have, already have an existing street and you're just taking a parcel of land and dividing it into five different lots. Um, but where you have topography and the only way to get a connection is to move a lot of dirt or
Or across the street.
Go across the street or, or like I think on eighty-seven, you have some issues going underneath eighty-seven and stuff. I don't think the city should have to bear that cost. Um, because it is too expensive. Um, and I talked to the city engineer about, could we rewrite this to say that, um, you know, I mean, this, this is a huge incentive for developers to do infill. The cheapest development that the city can have for Burke and his budget and, and that generates the most revenue for the city is infill. And that's why it's so encouraged. So I think this is a great step in the right direction. Um, but you have those kind of weird situations where we don't want someone who we feel like a developer should have to pay for something that's, like they're developing a lot that really, um, you know, if he had to pay it for, for himself, he'd say, mm, I'm not going to spend ten thousand dollars to develop that lot. But it's real easy for him to say, I want the city to do it because it's going to cost me anything.
Absolutely.
So, um, is there a way, I guess I defer to our attorneys, our, um, legal counsel, is there a way to write something in the provision for minor subdivision that we will allow up to the five lot subdivision or six, um, including the parent lot? Um, but restrict the utility improvement cost to twenty-five hundred dollars per lot or whatever we deem in the fee schedule to be, um, reasonable?
I think, I think if you set up those classifications, we'll have to sort of look at it across the board, just look at the fee schedule and see if that would be possible, but, uh,
Because we don't want to be trying to cross creeks. We don't want to be going born under roads. Like, that seems very unfair. Um, so, and, uh, I think this was a good catch by both staff or engineer. Um, when I met with them and we went over this and I talked to several developers, um, but I do think that there's plenty of parcels in Graham that if you're a developer, you look at and think, oh, this isn't worth developing. It's going to cost too much money to develop it. Um, but those parcels would now be developed. Um, and they would start generating, say, uh, property tax, additional property tax, um, additional, you know, the, 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 um, tap fees and things. But we don't want the actual cost to be, be in excess of what it's actually costing us.
We'll, we'll be happy to look into that. We'll get with Aaron and just see, you know, look at the fee schedule and see if such a classification would be, you know, legally feasible.
Okay. In speaking with the developers that I spoke with, they are very excited about the Cityogram, um, doing this. And I think that if we do pass it, I think we will have, um, responsible growth, not, um, these big, huge, and, and it, it keeps erosion control at a minimum, which we also get complaints about with growth and things. So, um, what is the desire of the council to have the?
Well, if I hear correctly, if we made it six lots, that triggers some state requirements.
No, I think what, uh, what the mayor was saying was that, you know, the state law has where you disturb an acre or more, then you're going to have to do certain, uh, stormwater and original control measures. Um, so when you think about a, uh, acre being forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty square feet,
Got R seven.
And you got a R seven, then you can split that up probably up to about six lots before you cross over into, uh, that threshold acreage wise that's going to put you over.
So it's really the acreage?
Well, in, in that, in that argument, yes. But I think what the mayor was also getting at was that, well, we may can look at going up to six when we have some caveat in the ordinance that would address the cost beyond a certain amount to be the responsibility of the developer and not put on the city. And I think, you know, with the attorneys looking into it, the staff, we may could come back with something a little, um, beefier that would be to address that concern. Because I think we're talking about two different concerns, but coming from the same change.
Yeah, my concern is when you try to put a dollar threshold, you know?
Well, that it can't exceed the fee. I mean, you don't want the cost and as we do fee increases, you know?
So you're basing it on the, the fee structure?
Well, I mean, I, I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the fees should be and are based on what our actual costs are. You know, when we charge a fee for a trash can, one of the things that I think this council was really good at, we did a complete overhaul of the fees that had not been reviewed in, I don't know, ten years or something, a long time. And when this council got on board, because there was a lot of complaints to, from the local community saying, all this development is costing me and I built my house twenty years ago or thirty years ago. And so we revised all of those fees and took a real hard look at that, um, to make sure that we weren't, um, that other citizens weren't subsidizing taps and what they actually were costing the city, trash cans and what they're actually costing the city. Um, all of those things. So I, I think, I think, uh, to me, I'm not writing the ordinance, but I, it seems like that they cannot, that the cost of that tap cannot exceed the fee that it's being charged for the tap. And if it does, it will be borne by the developer. And I, and I do think that you might have some lots where you say, okay, it's going to cost five thousand dollars to develop that lot. And he says, well, I'm, I'm happy to pony up twenty-five hundred dollars. And then the other twenty-five hundred come from the city. Um, and that lot is now developed, whereas otherwise it just sits vacant forever because the cost of development is expensive. And so this is the cheapest way that we can grow our community, um, in a responsible way.
Okay.
Well, we'll certainly take a look at it.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. So can I get a motion from the council to, um, request that our, um, attorney take a look at this and bring this up at the next, uh, scheduled city council meeting?
I make a motion that we, uh, table this and send it back to staff, um, to bring forth, uh, a better written, um, ordinance.
To address the issues that we discussed tonight. Think, uh, do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Hey, Madam Mayor, I have no particular, uh, position on any of the detail of which I'll discuss. My question is procedural, uh, with respect to having called a public hearing for this proposal and then discussing changing it to six, whether it can be continued under this description if in fact the council is going to change the number of lots, uh, that are affected by it?
Wouldn't it be re-advertized or?
I was going to say, we, we, we may very well just need to re-advertise it.
If you change it.
Yes.
Because in particular, I don't, I don't know. I, I think it'd be ill advised to just continue it because it may be such a substantial change or be considered a substantial change. We just need to re-advertise it. So I think that would be the answer is to re-advertise it.
Okay. And I mean, maybe we could put in the advertisement, the consideration is either five or six, including the parent lot.
I think we could if we get to that.
Yeah.
Get it going.
Okay. All right. Uh, a public hearing has been scheduled to discuss the location of the Sesquicentennial Park. And I just want to open by thanking everybody for being here tonight. I want to begin by clearing up a little bit of misinformation. Um, we have had to date, uh, to my count from the clerk, eleven publicly advertised meetings um, in regards to the park. Um, every time we have had it on the agenda, um, we have, you know, allowed anybody that was here to speak. There have been some of the, some of the challenges, I think, that, um, the, the, the issue at hand is in regards to the park is that the Sesquicentennial Park was, was not actually built by the city of Graham. Um, it was built by a group of individuals that wanted to clean up. There was a eyesore there on the court square. Pat Bailey, Sam Powell and others originally raised funds to build the park to celebrate the county's one hundred and fiftieth anniversary. Unfortunately, the park was built over an improperly filled basement. Uh, I don't know, I hope at the time they didn't know that, but over time, the ground has sunk and it's created, um, a lot of dangerous voids beneath the bricks. The engineers have told us and our public works director have said that it will continue to sink and, um, unfortunately, this isn't a simple fix. Um, estimated repair costs are approximately, I think around, somewhere around six hundred thousand dollars. And that's just an estimate. And to my understanding, it doesn't include any contingencies. Um, there are several, um, things that having these previously public advertised, uh, meetings have brought to light. Um, there have been people that have come and spoke, um, on the Sesquicentennial Park. Um, so there, some of the options that have been brought forward by both citizens, staff and the like, have been, um, either rebuilt on the same spot as where the park sits currently. Um, would you, uh, so that would require, regardless of whether the park is rebuilt exactly as it is now or whether it's moved, it would require, to my understanding, to be dismantled because they cannot fix, to my understanding, where it is currently. They can't keep it there and make repairs to it as it exists right there. My understanding is that the pergola would have to be moved to off-site. The bricks would also have, the memorial bricks would also have to be moved in order to make the, um, to dig out the basement and then tamp the basement back down um, with virgin soil, get all the debris that was kind of
Remove all the contamination. Yeah, there's contamination down there as well.
Yeah, they tested for that as well. Um, so when we were discussing that, some of the residents raised concern about the traffic noise. Um, Main Street, as everyone knows, carries around twenty-five thousand vehicles a day, including tractor trailers and logging trucks, loud jay brakes. People say, why can't we do anything about that? It is a state road. Nothing that, um, City of Graham, we don't own the road. Even though it's called Main Street, it is owned by DOT and maintained by DOT. Um, there were also concerns about the frequent sirens from police EMS and fire trucks. Our fire trucks run EMS right now along with regular, uh, Alamance County EMS trucks. So they're up and down Main Street all the time, going to peak resources. Um, where one resident says this is made, um, having any kind of event there at the park impossible. Other concerns that were voiced have been, I'm just trying to catch everybody up because there's been a lot of meetings up until then now. Uh, other concerns have been that it's not fenced, which presents some security issues. And to my understanding, the reason why the historic bell was removed. Uh, a business owner said that if the park is reimagined, could there be something added to the pergola to shelter people from the sun and or the rain? And another business owner came to speak and wants to ensure that we have a green space downtown. Several residents were concerned about their memorial bricks. But I can speak, I feel comfortable speaking for the entire council, that we are all adamant, myself included, that the memorial bricks are to be preserved and to be reused and should not be damaged when repairs are being made to the park. Um, the second option that was brought by, um, uh, people as a result of those meetings were to relocate it nearby beside the Graham Historical Museum. Um, someone is here tonight to speak on that. Uh, memorial bricks would need to be carefully collected and repurposed at, in, in that location. Um, there's been several people that said, well, this could be safer, more secure with fencing, um, lighting and bathrooms and kitchen access for events. Because there's a kitchen there at the historical museum that would be connected to it. It would basically be facing Maple Street. Um, they said this would be a quieter environment, away from constant traffic and sirens. Um, estimated cost for this would be significantly less, estimated, I think somewhere around fifty thousand or less. Um, let's see, uh, the third option that we heard was, uh, about selling the existing parcel that's there. Um, and that if that were to be done by the city, that I think people here on the council had made comments saying, well, is there a way to still honor the Sesquicentennial name? Uh, by either calling, um, anything that was built there, the Sesquicentennial Building or something to that effect. Um, someone from, uh, forget her name, um, Brittany from one of the local businesses said that, uh, she came and spoke and said that, um, she said if a building is built there and the park is moved to the other location, could, is it possible to possibly have a rooftop green space to honor the history of the original building? I thought that was interesting to hear. We would allow pro, this would allow private investment while still protecting the community's historic district. Um, there was comments about that the new building would need to be substanti, substantially similar to the original building that stood there in the early nineteen hundreds. A picture of the building that stood there originally is right here. It's three stories. And what I think Brittany was saying is if a building were to be built exactly like that back, could there be some sort of green space on the roof? Um, where people could go up there for photos and overlook in the city, that sort of thing. I just want to bring, um, to everyone's attention, the financial reality of the park. Um, uh, last year, we had to take from our fund balance in order to, um, have enough money for our budget to operate. Um, we have obviously unexpected expenses that come throughout the year, but very, that's a real reality in two thousand twenty-five and two thousand twenty-six fiscal budget. Um, you saw tonight in our consent agenda, we had quite a few, um, expenses that we had to pay for as a result of, um, tropical storm Chantel. This includes, and these are things that we do not have funded at this current time. We need five million dollars in order to repair our spillway as a result of that tropical storm. We need three million dollars to relocate all electrical equipment out of the new flood zone. It was not currently, to my understanding, before, a threat. But as the chief explained, things that had never flooded in Graham before flooded. Um, eight million dollars of interconnections and water line extensions are also needed. All of this has been submitted to every single legislator. I have met with them personally to ask for additional funds. I have asked for them to go back into session, when they go back into session, to please ask if there's any way that we can be, because as Tom Boney brought up in one of our previous meetings, I think as a private citizen, maybe not so much as a journal, journalist, but could we go and ask for this money to be funded by the state as we have done some projects in the past? I did that after that meeting. All of the money that is coming in the state budget is being directed to Western Carolina as a result of the hurricane. All of the money that is coming in the state budget is being directed to Western Carolina as a result of the hurricane. So they are just not even open to even submitting anything. It's a complete waste of time, is what I've been told, to try to get some sort of grant from the state in order to do this. So I just want that to be clear, that the funding has to come from us, at least. I don't see how it could possibly not come. I don't see how it could possibly come from the state in this fiscal year as a result of these two natural disasters. Yes, Graham was declared in Alamance County, all of Alamance County was declared a natural disaster. I checked on that funding. When would that funding be coming? They tell me years from now. Not what you want to hear, right? But I can assure you that if there is a tree to be beat, it has been beat. I have done more than I know to do even, and asked for advice from other people to try to find funding for projects like this. And because of the tropical storm and because of the hurricane, our budget is, I don't even really know what Megan's gonna do to make sure that we have these improvements done. But I will tell you, back in July, everyone will remember when Meben had to close every industry, every business, every office, every restaurant, and put all the residents on serious water restrictions as a result of the storm. This historic flooding that we had here in Alamance County. This is a perfect example of how important this infrastructure is and how critical it is that we have reliable and dependable water, especially during times of natural disasters. I'm exceptionally proud of the City of Graham, that we never lost water supply, and that no businesses were closed and no residents were put on water restrictions. The City of Graham had prepared for an event like this, and I praise our utility director, Tanya Mann, who made sure that the transition to our emergency water supply was done with little to no interruptions to services. To put it, to put all of this in perspective, I just want to say, our general fund budget is twenty-two million dollars. And you heard me already say, as a result of tropical storm Chantel, eight million, three million, five million. One of the things that we did get Dennis Riddell, Amy, and Stephen Ross to agree to is to present to, when they go back into session, a mini-budget to help pay, get money from the state in order to pay for some of these improvements and to have these improvements going forward. Our general fund cannot be used for these improvements or these repairs. It has to come from a water sewer budget. The only way that a water sewer fund budget, which our, our budget for water sewer is thirteen million dollars. The only way that that can be funded is through taxing, through water bill increases for our water and sewer, which we don't want to do that, and grants, which we apply. Every single year, we apply for grants. And we can't even raise, you know, really raise taxes in order to be able to do that, because again, the state requires that the money for water and for our utilities come from the water sewer fund. So you can either borrow money, you can either get grants, or you can raise the water rates. That's all you can do. We cannot take taxpayer money to fund it. Every penny on the tax rate is equal to around two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And repairing the park alone, if that was just done on property taxes, which again, we don't want to do, that's two point five cent increase on top of everything else that we have to pay for. Again, I said, the, the federal state funds, yes, we're gonna be, we have already been preliminary approved for that, but we're not going to be able to get that for years to come, probably. What we've done already is we've applied for over seventeen million dollars in utility grants. We've brought in nineteen million dollars in, in all. And I, I can dare say that I feel correct on this, that no previous city council in the history of this town has ever obtained this type, type of grant funding. We've worked extremely hard. Megan has worked hard. The staff has worked hard. And we have, I think, done a very good job of bringing in money in order to be able to have these critical infrastructures in place. We obtained over, almost a zero percent loan to fund the eighty-four million in wastewater upgrades. And our wastewater treatment plant is currently underway of being upgraded as required by the state and federal government. And we've never had an eighty-four million dollar improvement. And unfortunately, we inherited that. So we'll continue to aggressively try to seek funding, but I will just say in closing, we all care about the Sesquicentennial Park. I personally purchased bricks there in, in the park in order to honor loved ones. The park is special to all of us for a variety of reasons. The question is not whether to honor the park and its significance in our history. That is non-negotiable. We want to make sure that's done. The question is, how do we responsibly, safely, and do that in a way that fits our city's financial reality? Tonight, we are here again to hear comments. We ask that you please be respectful. Please limit your comments to three minutes so that everyone has a chance to speak and that this council, I can assure you, will not make any decisions without input from our citizens. And want to direct attention now to Megan. Are you gonna do this or?
Councilmember Chin was going to introduce the topic, because I believe he had direct conversation with Mr. Compton regarding the potential relocation.
Okay.
And at this time, I'd like to have Mr. Compton come forward and present his idea of moving the Sesquicentennial Park behind the Graham Museum.
Thank you all. I'm glad I'm not the only one who's concerned about the location of the park. So I'm sure there's people here on both sides. I am Russell Compton, and I live at three thirteen Holt Avenue here in Graham, and I've lived here my entire life. I'm here to speak on the park, of course. I just want to say that I do not represent anybody but myself. I don't represent any developers or real estate people or politicians. I'm just, this is something that I thought of. I have served on the Graham Museum Board on a couple of occasions and brought this idea up of moving the park, and it seemed to be an interesting and agreeable topic to them. And so I thought I would carry it a little bit further. I would like to see it behind the Graham Museum. There's a courtyard there that is very much in need of renovation. And it is not, it functions, but it's not on a level that would be considered safe. It is not, it is sort of a liability because of unstable rock that are there and uneven rocks in sidewalks. So that's part of the, the reason. So I wanted to give you a little bit of history. I study history of Graham. I've been studying it for years. I've studied it for like five years now, more in-depth. In eighteen fifty, when the city was laid out and lots designated, Thomas Sellers, who was a member of Providence Church, bought that particular lot, which was called Lot Number Two, and the land or the parcel that runs toward Wright Drugstore Building. He paid about five hundred dollars for it. And he built on that, to, on that slot, on that lot, a small two-story brick building for the purpose of having a business there. Fifty years later, two brothers, Patterson Brothers, bought the building and tore the building down and built what we know as the Patterson Building. I didn't realize you had a picture of it here. Oops. But there it is, and I'm sure you all remember it is. So the shop building, that's the way I remember it. They built the building on that lot with three stories, and unfortunately, that building was destroyed by fire. I don't know when, thirty years ago, something like that, and was demolished. And then we have the issue with the improper foundation situation. And there, as, as the mayor said, there's no question that the park has to be dismantled. Any way to fix it? And it just occurred to me that we could make a good change in the process of doing that. I'm, I'm just of the opinion that where it is now, it doesn't function very well. There is a lot of street noise. I was over there today and just rolled my window down, and every time you turn around, there's a car or truck or a dump truck or something going by, making noise. So it doesn't really lend itself to a, what I would call a green space or a meditative place or places you could have any kind of talk or event there. But and, and as you mentioned, the bell, which was, is a very historic artifact of the City of Graham. It was the original bell in the original courthouse, was there and had to be removed because of protesters. I'm just thinking under, you know, at the Graham Museum, it would be provided a place for, it would actually be an extension of the Graham Museum and would provide a place where the museum typically has lunch and learn events and speakers. Recently, a couple of years ago, we had a, an event honoring Jenny Swannar Robertson, and we had inside, but then we had outside, some refreshments and all. So it could also be used by other people, other, like the daughters of the American Revolution or whatever. But you really can't do that over there where it is now. There's no bathroom, there's no kitchen, which of course would have to be sort of a, you know, reserved if you're going to do it, be able to use those facilities. Through record over here, it's just not even an option. And so, and, and so I would, I would propose, you know, allowing it to be sold and let someone buy it who could put a, put a building back. For, you know, people will say, well, you're changing history by moving the park. But actually, for a hundred and fifty years, there was a building on that lot. And the park has only been there about twenty-five. So the history that was, that changed was when a building was not allowed to be put back there. And I'm, this is just a rendering of what it could be. This is actually probably too modern a looking building. But, you know, it could be something on this order, but more historically accurate, that looks more like that. And I think the city could request that whoever buys it and develops it be under certain restrictions like that. So that is just my thought. I, you know, I like to keep Graham the way it is, but I like to also keep Graham the way it was, only better. So that's just my recommendation, and I thank you for letting me share that with you.
Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
Is there anyone that would like to speak on this issue? Okay, yes, sir. Please come forward. Please state your name and your address for the clerk.
My name is Ted Nelson.
Hey Ted.
And my address is fifty-four zero eight Hanover Park Drive in Winston-Salem. But I lived in Graham a long time. My family lived here. And anyway, come here all the time. I love Graham and I love the people.
You live on Albright?
Was on Albright, uh-huh. But my sister and I sold that, I guess it's been maybe five years ago now.
Yeah.
And, but anyway, I wanted to tell you a little bit about me. This is only going to take about four minutes. A little about me, a little about my past, and some suggestions I have that are a little different from other people, but I think they're important to note. And thank you, Mayor Tally, and the, the county, city manager and assistant city manager for giving me this opportunity to speak. I was born and raised in Graham. My family has many historical connections in Graham and Alamance County. My mother, Elizabeth Long Nelson, taught art, and Russell Compton, who spoke just a little bit ago, was one of her students. And my father, Talmage Nelson, was a commercial artist who painted giant Coca-Cola signs all over the place.
Painted the one on Harden Street there, the Pepsi sign.
Well, it was Coca-Cola.
Oh, I thought he painted the one on the Pepsi sign that's also on that building on Harden Street.
Pepsi was a bad word.
Someone told me that he painted that.
Well, he painted a little of everything.
Maybe his nemesis did.
Maybe so. He painted a little of everything. I mean, I remember one time, my mother and he, they designed a dog cutout to go with a kennel. And he painted it up beautiful. It looked just like a Shetland sheepdog. And so he did all kinds of painting, and she did all kinds of artwork. He lived to be one hundred and five and a half. He's the oldest man I have ever met, my daddy. And so he was amazing. My grandfather, Will Long, was fire chief for about forty years, and I mentioned that to your current chief as he was leaving. And he said, yes, we have his picture there in the fire station. And I know, I know you do. My great-grandfather, William Samuel Long, was founder, first president, and father of Elon College, which is now a college in Elon University. My wife Cindy and I have three children, six granddaughters, and one grandson. My sister Jane and her husband Jim live in Burlington. Jane and I sold our family home on Albright Avenue just a few years ago. I'm a nineteen seventy-one graduate of Elon, now a college of Elon University. I'm retired now. My career has included being a news director of radio stations, managing editor of the Daily Reedsville Review, and twenty-four years in Rockingham County Environmental Health of the Health Department there, where I became environmental health director. Uh, let's see here. I know a lot of history involving the Graham Park site. In my opinion, the parkland can be revitalized using an architect recommended plan to pump a polyurethane foam substance into the old space. It hardens like concrete and for a lot less than what's been quoted. My brother-in-law told me about that. He's a retired architect. So the park could stay where it is if that's done, but I would recommend moving it to another site. Maybe what Russell has talked about. Park should be maintained since it was erected with funds raised by Alamance County citizens to recognize the city's one hundred and fiftieth anniversary. One of the fundraisers was my old news gathering partner, Pat Bailey, a longtime reporter and writer for the Alamance News and later for WBVB Radio, now known as WPCM, the Goat. The current park site will be an excellent site for a beautiful statue of Wyatt Outlaw. Wyatt was elected by Republicans, city constable or police officer. Wyatt was viciously tortured, murdered, and hanged by the white Brotherhood, the Ku Klux Klan, from a tree limb across from the courthouse on February twenty-sixth, eighteen seventy. He'd been awakened from his home on the night of his kidnapping, and he was dragged out of his home while his mother was stomped on and his six-year-old son was thrown aside. This happened a year after Outlaw or one of his fellow constables fired a gun into the air, not to shoot anyone, but to scare off a rowdy crowd of the Brotherhood members riding through downtown Graham and making a disturbance on a, on a night in February eighteen sixty-nine. The Brotherhood members decided they would return in eighteen seventy to punish Outlaw for shooting into the sky in eighteen sixty-nine in an effort to scare the unruly Brotherhood Yang.
Do you think you can summarize in the next thirty seconds? We just want to make sure we have enough time for everybody.
Yeah, I have about a minute and a half to go.
Okay, we have a three-minute.
All right, well, I'll make this as fast as I can.
Okay.
A memorial statue for Wyatt Outlaw, a Graham police officer, is long overdue. Also, the generic Civil War soldier standing guard at the courthouse should be protected and moved into a nice Civil War historical park inside Alamance County, but outside the Graham city limits. It has no place being in front of the county court building where it's for equal justice for all citizens. One last item here. There's some more history I think many of you know about. North Carolina. North Carolina Governor William Woods Holden received letters from citizens of Graham and Caswell Counties asking him to do something about the Klan tortures and murders. Governor Holden legally recruited a militia from Tennessee. These men came into North Carolina, found men involved in the Klan activities, and some of the men were indicted for Outlaw's murder. But no one was tried because the legislature passed a general amnesty in 1863. Governor Holden was impeached by the House, convicted by the Senate, and removed from office. Only in 2011, the North Carolina Senate voted unanimously to pardon and exonerate Governor Holden. Governor Holden was indeed the greatest governor in North Carolina history. Thank you all.
Thank you for being here. Just to let you know, we do have a memorial for the Kirk-Halden War that sits on Highway 87. It's a state marker that's there. And then our, I sat on the committee, gosh, 25 years ago or something, that got that done for the state marker there on.
I've seen those.
Yes, it's, it's right there by the bank there on Main Street. And then there is also, the former mayor, Jerry Peterman, also made great efforts to have his name added to the memorial, the war memorial that they, that they have here on Elm Street. So just one, I didn't know if you knew that since you've been in Winston-Salem, but.
Yeah.
Okay.
Jerry's a good friend of mine, we went to high school together.
Yeah, yeah. Well, thank you for being here, appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am?
Hello. I thank you, council, for letting me up here and speak before you. My name is Kay McMullin. I live at 818 Rivers Edge Drive, Graham, which is down closer to Sweptsonville. But I lived on Eastway Lane in Graham for over 32 years. So I have a lot of thoughts about this. And first of all, for the new site, I went down and visited it and took pictures. And I'm a visual person, so it's hard to realize just how you plan to put this on the acreage that you're talking about. Because what I saw was a lot of trash cans in the backs of buildings and on all this side and down this way. So I, I'm really puzzled about where you're going to put it on that plot. Also.
I don't want to speak for Mr. Compton, from what I've heard through the grapevine, that it would take up additional space behind that area so that you could see it from Maple Street. So the parking spaces there that are in that parking lot, to my understanding, is what was being proposed. Is that right, Bobby?
I haven't really been involved in the discussion about the new site.
So behind the building then would be the backs of the main street with their trash and all.
My understanding, a fenced-in area that would, that would take in two to three parking spots, I think, behind there. The city already owns that property. And so they basically be expanding on the back of the historical museum and having an outdoor area that could be fenced in and have access to bathrooms, kitchen, that sort of stuff.
Okay, a recommendation.
That's what I, please correct me if I'm wrong. You can speak after she speaks, yes, go ahead.
Recommendation is for the historic museum, that there have to be some more signs down there telling people what it is, because I had to park and get out and go. Thank goodness there was a picture in the Alamance News, because I didn't know where it was or how to find it. So a little more signage there would be a good thing to consider. And then another point I have was, in, in reading what you've had to write, you know, I've been concerned that the changes that have happened. Some people have said, okay, we need to move it, and then we need to do whatever's necessary to make the property safe before selling. Others have said, no restrict, no, go ahead and sell it just as it is. Let the buyer pay to have the repair done. And I would certainly be in favor of this. Just as you were saying earlier about a builder, which you're going to change something. I couldn't understand all of it. But you would say that the, a builder shouldn't expect the town to pay for it. So I'm very much in favor of selling it as is, not prepare it, repair it, and use our tax, or whatever money you say we can use. I'm a little confused of where the money comes from. Again, as I said, I'm a visual person. So when you've described a budget and how it's here and how it's there, you know, I need a picture. I'd do really much better with a picture. And I do recall that at one, in one discussion, it was mentioned that there was $600,000 that Senator Gailey had had the state, she had pushed the state to grant that to us, and that it was, from my reading, that you immediately said, no, this could not, that could not be used for this. Those funds couldn't be used for this.
Well, what happened was, I went to Senator Gailey and asked for money in the state budget to do crosswalks. We have, we repeatedly get complaints from people almost getting run over on a daily basis on Court Square. Years and years ago, I want to say 20 years ago, I sat on a committee that got a grant from DOT to put in the crosswalks, the brick-stamped crosswalks that we had. When DOT came through and repaved, there is no grants that pay, that pay for that. I went to the county to ask for them for money. As you all know, the county commissioners cry poor mouth and say that they don't have anything either, any money. And I said, well, it's crosswalks that mainly go to the courthouse, and it seems reasonable that they should have to help pay for that. And couldn't get any funding that way, but I did ask and did request. And then I went to Gailey and said, hey, do you think you could try to get some money from the state to do that? Now, understand that even though you don't, like, the crosswalks are in the process of, and have been for quite, for months and months and months, been with DOT to be approved. I don't think it's a good, personally, I don't think it's a good use of taxpayer funds, even if they came from the state, to start a project and then say, oh, no, we're not going to do that project. We're wasting all this engineering costs and use it for something else. I, I just, I think for safety reasons, the, the crosswalks are very much needed in the downtown. And, and it, like mentally, like people, when they go across the crosswalks, because it's an uneven pavement, it makes them slow down. Like, you know, just, it's just like on the side of the road. They put the bumps on the side of the road so that when you hit them, you'll like immediately, you know, slow, slow your pace down. And it's same sort of thought there. We, we, I've, I've personally witnessed on video someone being run over on Court Square. And I just don't want to see that happen. I do think that that $600,000 is not being used to, you know, buy gym equipment or, you know, anything that we could possibly do without. It, it was, I feel like you have to be, you have to stick to what you say. And even though the funds are technically unrestricted, we went to her and said, can you get this funding for us for this project? And she did. And so I feel like we need to follow through on that and put that in. I think the crosswalks are just as important as the Susquehannia Park.
Well, anyone would think that, I hope. I, I don't think anybody in here would disagree with that statement. But the point I wanted to make was, what I read in the Alamance News, which right now I want to publicly thank Mr. Boni, because if we didn't have that, we wouldn't know a lot of things. Even if I came to every meeting, like, I don't, I can't hear a lot. I left my hearing aids at home, I'll admit that. But the point I wanted to make was that, what I read was somebody mentioned about the $600,000, and that your comment was, no, we couldn't do that. In fact, that can't be used for that, for, for this, for, for the park. And that then Senator Gailey was contacted, and she said there were no restrictions on this money. Now, the points you're making are well-taken. But I wanted to clarify and say that I heard no clarification that, well, it doesn't say it can't be used, but we've decided it, it's best not to use it in that manner, you know? So I just wanted to make that point. And again, I want to thank Mr. Boni. You know, with the Daily Times News not printing anymore, the best news, the only news we get of what's going on really is from the Alamance News. And I'm not, I'm not employed by them, let me be quick to say that. But I do appreciate him coming to the meetings and giving us clear information about what's happening. Because as I said, I'm a visual person. I can't get everything I'm hearing here, or, but I think I'll come to the meetings more.
Thank you for being here, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Is there someone else that would like to speak? Yes, go ahead.
My name's Randy Phillips. I live at 130 Burton Street. And for the record, I want to say that I hope the park stays there. I would like to see it, see it remain there. The old Graham Soda Shop that was there burned in 1977. I know, because I hung out at the fire department. I live this house right next door here. Hung out at the fire department a lot when that call came in. I ran up there, and I helped the firefighters up there fight that fire. A couple of years later, the roof caved in during a snowstorm, and that pretty much demolished the building there, brought it down. But I do think the park needs to stay there, because it is part of and recognizes the history of the city of Graham. Graham was established because of Alamance County. And I think we need to recognize that. That's why I feel strongly about keeping it there. I know I haven't used up but a minute of my time, but I did want to say that.
Thank you so much, Randy. Thank you for, yes, Mr. Turner, thank you for being here.
Chip Turner, 128 West Over Street, Graham. I'm against moving the park also. And I can't believe you'd want to put it in some parking lot. Cars backing, traveling through there, trash cans, like the lady said, trash cans all over the place. Truck, trash trucks coming through there. And over 400 people bought bricks. My family bought them. And I didn't buy a brick, I didn't buy bricks to have it moved. I bought bricks, invested in that site for bricks to be there till whenever, at the end of time. Didn't buy bricks to go behind in a parking lot. And it's not very safe going to that park of cars backing and pulling in, because people came back. It ain't safe. And that park is protected by sidewalks and fences. And I've been here all my life, too. 27 years.
Young boy.
Yep, 27 years. That park has been there for 27 years. And people live overhead in the buildings, and the noise hasn't ever bothered them. So I'm against moving it. One more thing, I'll be real quick. You move that park, moving brick, I bought brick for that park. I didn't buy a brick to go over here behind a, a parking lot. So I want my money back. And I imagine 400 other people want their money back. Thank you.
Okay, yes.
Daniel, I was 1022 No Road. I started a petition when this whole thing come about. And I ain't really pushed it, but I got 150 signatures that want to keep it where it's at. If I push it, I probably could get 5,000. I don't know if the council has looked at hydrofilling, or even heard of it, like the gentleman mentioned earlier. That's a cheap fix. It will fix what we got, according to what engineers I've talked to. Move global field. Moving it over there behind.
I'm sorry, second.
Global field. Field, field. Moving over there and losing three to four parking spots, I don't see it. We don't have enough as it is in Graham right now, anyway. Parking's a big issue. We talk about it all the time here. With the trash can from the business mine generates, CNZ, it smells horrible over there. And by the way, can we get the trash truck fixed so it don't leak all over town? It just needs to stay where it's at. That's what people bought the bricks for. They bought it for their Salamance County. Let's keep it where it's at, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Judy Hunt-Lanley. I lived at 602 North Melville Street from 1988 to 2013. And now I live at 1906 Spring Meadow Drive. I was 55 years old at the celebration and ribbon cutting of this park. It was snowing that day. And I'm proud of the park. I agree it needs to stay. We are the history of Alamance County, not just Graham. It was 150th anniversary of Alamance County. I had a speech written out, but I listened to everybody else. I don't agree with the statue of someone else in that park. That is sad history. We want happy history. Mr. Powell, Sam Powell, and Ms. Bailey worked so hard on getting this done. I agree, I bought a brick to stay there. I didn't got a brick to be moved in a parking lot. I went back there and looked, and I thought, why in the world would they want to put this off, this off beaten, dark place? We don't need a big new building. We need to keep our park as it is designed as closely as we can. And this is the first time I've heard about the feel of what they said to fix it. Well, let's try it, or give it some thought. If this is Graham, I mean, city property, if it's going to be sold, who's going to fix the problem? Will the city be responsible? If they are, we'll let them fix our park. And if an owner is wanting to buy, he's not going to want to go to that expense. So anyway, I got all my papers from all the ceremonies. Jay Lashley was there, and he asked me, he says, step down, and I want to take a picture of you. And this was me at my Elvis brick. I want my Elvis brick to stay there. Elvis is history as well as our park. And so anyway, I appreciate our park. I want it to stay there, and I don't see why a solution can't be worked out. And I just, I'm grateful for it, and I am very, very, very hoping it will stay there.
Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. My name is Patsy, Patsy Bailey Allard. I am, my family has a farm that has been in our family for more than 100 years, at 6146 Snow Camp Road in Alamance County. Some of you, not many of you, will recognize this hat. This hat belonged to my mother, Pat Bailey, who, along with Sam Powell, were the co-chairs of the Susquehannia. Thank you for your acknowledgement on this. This, it may surprise the members of this council about the amount of pushback that you all have received in moving what is actually a piece of property that is in, is causing some, some challenge. I don't know if it surprised you. Kind of surprised me and my mother, and our family would be really glad to know that. Here's where we are with this. You have heard about the history. You've heard about the importance. You, you, you've offered, and I appreciate that you've offered an opportunity for a change, not just to take it down and throw it away. Unless we understand more about putting it to a parking lot, it sounds a little like you got, you went to a restaurant that really mattered to you, and they took one look at you and moved you to the table by the kitchen door. And so it would be a dream if it could stay where it is, if the fill is a possibility. I'm not, don't know if that has been considered or not. That would be wonderful, things get filled all the time. If it cannot stay. If it cannot stay, I'm wondering to the extent to which this council has, uh do we know what it would look like? Do we have a drawing, is it just going to be bricks, is it going to be grass, is it going to be a path? Uh is it going to be safe, will there be a route? Have you considered possibilities and will there be a public hearing on any of those things rather than after the fact? This county is proud of its history, so many people came together to be sure. Not only for the history, for goodness sakes, but for the now, this area is growing like gangbusters. Graham has a chance to remain in such a distinguished way. Let's not just make it any other old main street. It's already here, possibly it could continue. The people in this county are begging you not to take this lightly. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, and I apologize, we thought this public hearing would be at the end of the night, apologize for.
No, 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 glad we could move it up for you. Anyone else that would like to speak? Yes, how are you doing tonight? Good.
Give this up just a little bit. My name is Alex Bullis, uh I live at five hundred Wildwood Lane, Graham, North Carolina. And I just wa, I got interested in this a few weeks ago and I decided to do a little research. And unfortunately, the minutes for this council are not available all the way back to March of this year. And so that got my mind interested on why that's so. And I got into looking at the details of this uh project that was occurring on the corner. And that it was involving a foundation that was lackluster. And it made me think, well, maybe there's some foundational issues going on with this council, it seems. Because there's not a lot of transparency that seems to be occurring when it revolves around this issue. The minutes are not there, magically two bids appear out of nowhere, I've spoken with several contractors who said they would have loved the opportunity to put a bid in. They had absolutely no clue that this was going on. The transparency that's going on is what is to me alarming about this whole issue. Because I think that as a city council, it's important to be transparent about the decisions that you're making about such a large change. And that the citizens of the, of the city or county, whatever it may be, deserve the ability to hear every conversation that goes on, whether it be the bids that are, because I wanted to, to look at the minutes that pertain to when the bids were opened. And they were not uploaded or seemed to be uploaded, to my understanding.
Are you looking at the YouTube or the minutes?
I was looking at the, on the City of Graham website.
I'm, I'm looking at it now, it goes all the way back to two thousand fifteen.
When I was looking at the, these, the most recent ones, I did not see the minutes, I saw the agenda. However, the minutes did not seem to be beside the, on, on the city's.
Looking at them, I'm confused.
I will point out, every agenda packet has minutes as they have to be approved by city council.
And they're on the website.
Yeah, they should be there.
Yeah, you always approve the minutes of month and arrears.
Well, then that's my mistake, I, I bought, I just didn't see them on there. However, that doesn't change my position that the fact that there still needs to be some type of, I, I, and I don't know this for a fact, but it seems that the bidding process was fairly skirted, in my opinion, because I spoke to multiple developers who said that they were under no understanding that there was a bidding process going on. And this number of three seventy nine, four fifty, and now I get in here today and it's six hundred thousand. What, what's the number, what's the number on relocation just alone in itself before we sell the property? It just seems like this process is, but you know, going on down the line, and I just want transparency on numbers and what the council has done as far as speaking with other people who are involved in this.
So the bid process, to my understanding, was public, they have to run public um notices and all of that. And then, am I, yeah, it's posted on the website?
Posted on the website, but that's seems to, I've spoken with multiple developers, that seems to be the only place it was posted. It was not posted like a normal bid would be on a, on the North Carolina website to where it's just open. And I'm not saying that this was done maliciously, it just seems that that was the only place that this bid process was posted, was on the Graham website.
Well, none of us do that, I have to, I mean, we don't post it, I mean, I have to direct to.
Yeah, I'm not sure what North Carolina website you're referring to.
I was just speaking with a developer this morning that said that they can, they can easily search for any open bid that's available in North Carolina. And that they would have been happy to place a bid on this, and they were under zero understanding that it was open to bid on.
And who are those developers?
That was uh Central Builders in Medden. Was who I spoke with this morning, who said that they weren't able to view it. And were today, so when I spoke with them was the first time they understood that there was a bid that was even open.
Yeah, our bid process was April of twenty twenty five.
So if he looked at it in April of twenty twenty five, he should have been able to see that, I would imagine. But they held the bid open for how long?
Um it looks like they were due April twenty fifth, there was a pre-bid meeting on April sixteenth.
Yeah, I'm just, I would just, I'm, and again, I'm not a contractor or developer. Relaying a message of a, another individual in this, in this area. Um, thank you though.
Thank you, yeah. Anyone else that would like to speak? Yes, sir. The running man.
This is the first time I've seen you with a shirt on, you know, already out running around without a shirt on.
Sunglasses and all that mess on, I was out there today and it was, it was hot. But I'm Richard Wright, I'm the running guy or the walking guy, it kind of depends upon when you see me. But um I just want to, I just want to come, come forward and say that I think it's wonderful that we have citizens like this, one side and on the other side, who can come here together in the same room and talk about this issue and other issues. I think this is democracy in action, I think this is beautiful. You folks are going to make the right decision, I know. Because you're home folks, you're local, and so I thank you for that. And as far as the Susquehannet Park goes, I'm glad we've got one. Um it's um, I remember when the soda shop used to be there, I think all, some of us remember when the soda shop used to be there. Uh I just don't want to see it.
Get you a pine float. You could get you a pine float. Take a glass of water if you're full.
Coke or whatever, I can remember going in when I was too young to go in. They said, you can't go to the soda shop. But um I uh, just as long as the Susquehannet Park remains open and active, that we, that we honor our history that way. Uh that it's not uh hidden away, but it's, it's out in the open, I think that if it's behind the, the um uh historical museum, it's open there. But if it's on the corner where it was intended to be, then it's open there too, just as long as it remains. Who have a demonstration, they're going to be there, well, that's the American way, folks.
That's exactly right.
Demonstration, you're going to come on public property and do it, at least we're talking about things. So thank you so much, Jennifer.
Thank you.
My brother Tom was here, so I've got, I've got to go home and face him as to why I came in late. But I was moving a two hundred year old table, and I think I moved every year, all two hundred of those years, so anyway. Thanks a lot, thank you for what y'all do.
Thank you.
What's that, oh, my name is Richard Wright, W R I G H T, like the Wright brothers. And my address is two three six South Marshall Street in the big town of Graham.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
East Westbrook, six oh four Truck Lotterie Court in Graham. I really, I've heard all kinds of things about what we should do. I don't understand what you're talking about, moving the park over here and then we're going to build a building, we're going to have bathrooms and all this, I think the park should be, we're going to improve the property anyway, isn't that what we said last time? The property's going to be improved if it was to be sold. So if it's improved, why wouldn't we put the park back there? You've got, I don't know how many people.
Think that's what somebody said, I thought they were, I think they were saying.
He sold that.
So as is, but who's going, who's going to buy that with the knowing of the unknown, I guess, not the knowing, the unknown. I mean, can the cities.
I think digging out a basement and putting a basement back would be the cheapest thing for a new developer to do in that area. Because the cost of using shoring devices to hold up the sides of the walls that go down.
That was my other question about the adjacent properties, when we go to do the work, or whoever goes to do the work. Is that going to create a problem for them too?
The liability of that is scary.
Anyway, in my opinion, I would like to see the park stay where it's at, I know it's not economically feasible, I know that. But it's just like, ever since I've lived here, that I can remember, that has been there. And when it was used, people used it, so and it's right in the heart of downtown, I guess that's what I'm saying. Yeah, we want to move it over there where I agree with everybody else, it's a parking lot, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes.
Hello. Chelsea Dickey, five eleven Oakwood Lane. Um I am running for the mayor of Graham position um in two months, November fourth. Um but today I am here to bring a couple of community members' comments that were not able to be here. Um out in North Graham, we were talking to a woman and she comes downtown solely to come and sit in the park and watch people walk by. Um sit among the flowers, it is an attraction for our downtown. It's in everybody's eyesight, right around the circle, and that is a beautiful thing for our downtown. Another community member, I'm going to have to read this, sent me a message and said this, there is a brick in Susquehannet Park for my maternal great grandparents, David and Virgie Cook, who lived for many years on Ward Street in the house that is now addressed two sixteen. There is a brick for my maternal grandfather, Charles Luther Jarrett, who built the house at three hundred Denny Circle in nineteen fifty five and lived there until his death forty years later. I do not support the removal of the park to part of a parking lot behind the museum. The push to tear down the park and build on, uh build a building on the land seems to be rushed. This is public land and the push is to privatize it. Our family feels strongly about rebuilding Susquehannet Park at its present location. I would also like to share my personal um opinions and my professional opinions. I've been in community development for a decade and public land is hard to come by. And we have a beautiful plot of land right downtown. There are other ways of funding something as great as a park that is right in the middle of our downtown. There's Duke Energy Grants, there's Impact Alamance that are two very easy within reach funding systems if that is the biggest uh block to keeping the park where it is. Um and so I would like to share those community members' their concerns and also mine, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Anyone else? Burke, would you like to speak a little bit about the park?
Uh Burke Robertson, Public Works Director, spend most of my working hours at one oh five West Parker Street. Um as far as the park, the, the bid, uh we, I don't know where Aaron listed it to, but anybody that expressed interest through the whole process, I got their contact information and I emailed them the day that the bid went out, hey, go ahead and bid it. Uh somebody, wherever you posted it, somebody picked it up out of Durham, we had some contractors out of Durham bid. You know, the park itself, you know, due to the soils reports and everything, it's about eight and a half or nine foot of debris. There is some heavy metals and some contaminants that was identified in it.
I, I think my biggest concern is the wall there, but when you go in from the main street side, the wall to the left, I mean, I'm really nervous that that wall's going to fall over and damage the bricks that are there. Um crack them in half or whatever, because it's really leaning. And I just worry every time we have a real big rainstorm, it holding the water there. Because that land is, I mean, the, the dirt is heavy.
Yeah, the landscape bed with the clock in it has settled a little over a foot on the back wall. I mean, you can go in there, look and see, look at the engine, original plans, and it was basically level all the way across, so you can see that with a naked eye.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Burke, Mr. Burke. Yes. Should we, should we, should we be concerned about the clock and go ahead and disassemble?
Um, you know, we could, the clock, I don't think, due to the base and the way the foundation is, I don't think it's an imminent, any imminent risk of falling over. Uh well, you know, we keep monitoring, we keep an eye on, if it looks that way, we'll pull, go ahead and pull it up.
Yes, Mr. Bonney.
Hey, by the way, Mayor Council, um very respectfully, Mayor, I, I must take exception to the knowledge that you laid out at the outset. You said this has been discussed uh or on the agenda of the council eleven times. I, I don't believe that's accurate, uh the first time the council began this discussion was in March, you've only had about six meetings since then. And it hadn't come up at about half of those times, most times spontaneously. This is the first time there's been a called public hearing uh for the discussion. And even then, Mayor, what was listed on the agenda is not what's listed in the public notice. It says that it would move um the Susquehannet Park to a portion of the parking lot behind, a, a portion of the City of Graham parking lot behind the Graham Historical Museum. Now, what Mr. Compton described, however, was, was simply putting it in the, I think he called it courtyard, a very small space. I'm not good with spaces in terms of estimating numbers, but my guess is it's about thirty by thirty, a very small space. If, in fact, the city is considering taking part of the parking lot, which is the way the description was listed, the question comes, has the city looked at what the both capacity and use of that particular parking lot is? How many spaces would be reduced? How is traffic to continue, that's a one-way in and out on Maple Street. Uh it's not at all clear how that would work. Um and I, I, I just think it's been.
I, I asked.
misrepresented.
I'm sorry, I, I'm not trying to misrepresent anything, but I asked our city clerk how many times they had been, um that's the number that I got. I know it had been discussed and I know you had given comments, Griffin had given comments, I know it's been publicly advertised because.
Only this time.
No, that's not true.
I believe it is true. I, I, I would be glad to stand corrected, but to the best of my knowledge.
How would, how would Griffin?
This is the first public hearing.
This is the first public hearing, but it has been on the agenda. Because we, we send out, the city sends out to all the business merchants what is going to be discussed. And it was, to my understanding, on the agenda, and that's why Griffin came and gave comments, that's why several other people have come over many, many times and given comments. Do, I mean.
Yes, ma'am, and, and I think the part that should be emphasized about that is with almost one solitary exception, everyone has called for fixing and saving the park in its current location. Mr. Compton is the one person you have previously cited as in favor of moving it, and now we have his specific proposal. But very interestingly, though you said it had been mentioned previously, it has never been previously mentioned. This is the first time there's been any discussion about that location. You all talked a number of times about putting it at the Civic Center, which I think is also a bad idea. But, but in other words, this is the first time this location has been discussed. And it's very clear to me that it's, basically, I'm going to put it in layman's terms, it's a half-baked idea. You don't have any idea what it would actually be, we ask as a public records request last week, let's have a copy of the drawings or the sketches that are envisioned for this relocation, and I was told there aren't any. And I was told there aren't any. There aren't any. It's simply based on Mr. Compton's request to consider moving it there.
Well, Mr. Boney, respectfully, you know, we've been asking people to bring us ideas for some time now. You know, we wanted people to come and talk to us about it. No decision has been made. And, and again, I say, you know, I'm surprised to, you know, hear Ms. Dickey get up and say that it sounds like it's a rushed decision. No decision has been made. And, and frankly, you lambasted us when we don't talk about it publicly or call a public hearing, and now you're lambasting us for calling a public hearing. So quite frankly, I'm a little confused by, you know, the whole thing, you know, and I think, you know, there's some people, a couple people here tonight, I don't wanna name names, but, you know, you say it's a quick decision, or, or you're, you're hiding the agendas, you know, from us, and these are people that I've maybe seen at one or two meetings in four years that I've been on council. So I'm just saying, it just seems, it, all we're doing is discussing. That's all we're doing, and we wanna do it in a public forum.
I guess I just don't want anybody to, I, I'm sorry that you just said it's a half-baked idea, because there's been a lot of different...
Just vacation.
It's in it then, but it's, see, it's an idea.
Let's not insult...
Yes.
Anybody's idea.
Thank you.
When you ask the public, you, it, it, when you ask the public for their input, let's be respectful of everybody's ideas. There's several different people that have different ideas. I loved the idea that Brittany had about having still a green space there. She's like, "Well, if you have it up high, you're not gonna have anybody complaining about the noise." I said, "Gosh, that's brilliant." And I do think that at the end of the day, when you get a lot of different information from people, I think it would have been prelimin, you know, uh, rushed or preliminary to have drawings and things like that necessarily. But I understand that she's a visual person, and she, you know, so you're gonna, and I, and I don't have a problem with that at all. I think everybody has their own point of view and their own perspective, and none of that is wrong.
I'm the same way. I'm visual.
When we're at a public meeting, and we, and we want people to come and give their opinions, not just you as a journalist, but you as a citizen, Tom. You've been a business owner down here for many, many years, and we want to hear your opinion. And whether you think so or not, like, we do listen to what you say. Um, and, you know, when you said something about, can you get, um, funding somewhere else? I promise you, I did go try after that time to try to do so. But I don't think anybody, and I don't want anybody to feel... That they're gonna be, um, mistreated, and I hope you'll choose your words carefully when you write your article, that, I hope you don't call it a half-baked idea, because then other people will feel, "Well, if I go down there and give them my opinion about what should be done with the park, then I don't wanna be attacked." There's some business owners that have, I know have called me, probably other council members, that have said, "Well, I don't wanna say this publicly, cause I don't want, I own a business, and I don't want people to, um, you know, if they don't agree with my opinion, I don't want them to, you know, have some sort of..." Um, I, they're all shaking their heads, cause, you know, we do get...
Cause they don't want the name in your paper.
And they don't, they don't want to be the, the subject of, you know, vile comments, or saying that their, their idea is not smart or not.
Well, I think the same is true, Mayor. For the many comments that you've heard over the past six months, including many tonight, who are begging the council to keep the park where it is. And I think it's, it, it just can't be ignored, uh, Councilmember Whitaker, that from the very beginning, the very first time this topic was publicly raised back in March, you frankly, and Councilman Chin, and the mayor, all three were helped to sell the property and move the park, quote, "somewhere else."
We, we did bring it up.
From the beginning.
And you lambasted us for that too, so, I mean, you know.
It wasn't originally brought up by the council.
But nothing has been done.
Understand that.
You see that, because we're discussing, we're, we're trying...
It was originally brought up by, as a budget issue, because we did not have the money to fund it.
Right. That's right.
You know, in the past, but for payers.
If I could cor, correct you, it was originally brought up at a budget meeting, as I understand it, by, uh, Mayor Protem Hall, as, "Let's, uh, repair that park." Now, I might add, in, in response to the man who was concerned about the minutes, there's not a word about that in the minutes from that meeting, not a word. But, uh, that is what he has stated that he raised at that meeting back in, I think it was December, uh, December of twenty-four. But in other words, the, the origins of the topic began with how to repair and renovate the park, not move it, not tear it down, not put it behind some other facility, anywhere.
Mr. Boney, let's get it straight. In that meeting, I stated, "Let's look and see what we can do to repair it." And that was it.
And it's taken us how many months to get two bids?
It was actually brought up in December of twenty-three at that planning session, and in April of twenty-four, it was listed on the agenda under Old Business, so it must have been discussed between December twenty-three and April of twenty-four, in addition to the meetings this year.
Um, I, I know that, I feel like our clerk does a good job of reporting the minutes, but there's, I don't know, hundreds of things that are said in the budget session that she couldn't possibly do a transcript, and, but she does try to hit the highlights.
Well, and this is another point, Mayor, I've made before, I'll make it again since we're passing through this topic. And that is, you need to record all of your meetings. Nobody can go back and listen to that meeting, cause you didn't even record it in the first place. So not only are the minutes frankly inadequate with regard to this topic, but there's no way anybody can hear what anybody of the council said at the meeting.
I will state that I don't think the minutes are inadequate. I think you're, again, uh, being, uh, very technical on something that is, uh, no decisions are made at that budget hearing. There are a lot of different things that are discussed, and in fact, we take pictures of everything that's written up on the board, and, you know, we're look, going through many, many budget items. I mean, gosh, our budget, uh, is this thick in a notebook. There's no way we could put the, all of, everything that we discuss in minutes. Minutes are a summary of what happened. No action, if there would have been an action in regards to the Ses- Sesquicentennial Park, it would, and, and by law, would have had to been recorded in the minutes. But I take your comments in regards to it being, um, recorded, and I have no problem with that whatsoever. Um, I will just tell you that never has the council had those meetings recorded. They're work sessions, they're open to the public, we invite the public to come, we invite you, you to come, we invite journalists to come. Um, they're public meetings that where we discuss the budget, and we welcome people to come. You know, there's, there's nothing not transparent about that, it just...
They need to be accessible, Mayor, and surely you would recognize that. They're not accessible to the public when you don't record them.
How is it?
They've never been recorded.
It's never been, I mean...
Ever.
Every single council from the history of Graham has never, they've always had, and I, I have personally, as a citizen, when I wasn't on the council, gone to those meetings as a private citizen. So they were, if I wanted to know what was going on regarding the budget, or I wanted to ask for funds to be used in a certain way, I would go as a private citizen or a business owner and say, "Hey, I'd love for the city to consider doing this, or doing that," or whatever it is. Um, I remember they had them, they've had them at the, uh, Maple Street Center, they've had them at the Civic Center, which is where we had this one. You know, I'm sorry that you didn't attend, I don't know why.
Madam Mayor, I, I don't wanna belabor this dimension of, of the discussion.
Yeah.
Uh, but I would point out, other boards, such as the county commissioners, who we have also criticized because they had meetings, which were three, four, five hours long without recording, usually in their little budget workshops at the beginning of the year, have changed their policy to include a recording of such meetings. And that's what I would urge this council to do, to be totally transparent, as the gentleman was discussing. Because the problem is, unless you went to the meeting, and if I'm not mistaken, no member of the public went to that meeting, the original budget meeting, and therefore, nobody can find out what happened at that meeting. There's no record of it.
And if anybody was there?
I don't think December of twenty-three, no. Aside from the moderator, who obviously was an outside party. I don't, I don't recall anyone else being in attendance.
I think we make great efforts to make sure that we have public input. Every single one of our council meetings are not just publicly announced, but we actually send out, um, emails to business owners to remind them to come. We do an advertised publication in the paper. We don't just do the minimum. We, um, you know, advertise it on our Facebook page, we advertise it on other socials. We send the agenda to every business downtown and, you know, request for them to come. And we do have pretty good particip- participation, but, I mean, people don't like numbers. I, I get that maybe a lot of people don't wanna attend a budget hearing, it's probably boring to most people, but, um, you know, I mean, it got brought up as a result of Meghan saying, "Hey, you know, this has been brought up at previous councils." Do you remember, Burke, how long ago? I mean, it was before any of us got elected. Twenty sixteen. So, I mean, there's been plenty of budget hearings, cause I'm sure it was brought up at every single of them, um, in that regard. And we, at the end of the day, Tom, we wanna do what the majority of the citizens want. Um, we want to get input from the citizens, and we work for the citizens of Graham. So, um, maybe a good idea would be to put out a survey to the community, to ask them what they want, um, share with them some of the ideas that have come forward, um, not just by Mr. Compton, by other people, um, about some possibilities about the park. There have been so many things that people have mentioned that I never thought of, I'm sure Mr. Chin never thought of, I'm sure yourself never thought of, that are good possibilities. You know, we heard the first time tonight, something about hydrofilling and flowable field. Uh, I know a lot about construction, um, but I was, I don't, I, I have to look into these. We've, I've never, uh, done anything with those kind of techniques. Um, and I don't know how much that cost. But I'm very concerned about the expense of this, and, you know, obviously, all of us would be very happy if we could get six hundred thousand dollars to fix the park. We have a lot of expenses with the, um, Tropical Storm Chantel, and everybody, you know. Um, Bob, when you guys were looking at doing the, um, carousel there, did you put out anything to the public about how much that was gonna cost? Like, did you do a referendum or anything like that?
Ask, you know, for them to make some proposals. But as I recall, there was really only one that would, that could do the Denzel Carousel, so we, we actually wound up negotiating.
Go out to the public and ask the public about, that was a huge expense for Burlington.
Well, it was a huge expense. It was, you know, um, I can't recall the numbers, there were huge numbers.
Five million dollars.
My recollection is five million, but I'm speaking by memory, and I could just look at it.
Yeah, it, I mean, it, it was close.
A much bigger budget than Graham.
Well, it, yeah, really, that, you know, is really a, a, a special carousel, and it was a lot of interest in restoring that. And, um, we decided, you know, that would be an expense, it'd be worthwhile, and, and I'm, and I'm speaking of the council member, and I'm satisfied that it was, you know, well worth it, because it's, it's a showpiece. We've had it for a number of years, and it's, it's an attraction, and it was worth the money. I, but like, like it all, we would have appreciated had it been a whole lot cheaper, but that was not the case. So we went ahead.
I'll, I'll just conclude. I think Ms. McMullen was, uh, quite correct in, uh, citing that from the outset, uh, Senator Gailey had said that the money that she had put into the state budget for the City of Graham for, quote, "downtown improvements," uh, when interviewed, she made very clear, could have included the Sesquicentennial Park. It was the mayor's view that you didn't wanna do that, you wanted to do the crosswalks. But, but in terms of the state's position, the state's, uh, uh, specifications, it was allowed. And I, I just generally think that most...
I don't wanna belabor that either, but I'm a person of my word, and when I go and specifically request for money for a proj, a project, I feel like we've already started the engineering and all that sort of stuff. It came before the city, the city appro, the city council as a whole, all five mayors, you know, agreed to use it for that purpose.
After, after, Mayor, just to be clear, after, you had explicitly stated in response to a question from, uh, then-councilmember, uh, Parsons, that no, it could not be used for Sesquicentennial Park. And so...
I didn't say that no, it could not be used for Sesquicentennial Park. I said, that is what we're...
Shut it down.
Is what are, that is what we are, we're voting on, what to use it for. That's what we voted on. Literally, that's the motion that we voted on. But I went and got that money, and instead of being, I don't know, grateful that we got the money, we now want to like, say, "Okay, let's just forget about what we asked for it for, and use it for something else." When I believe that the sidewalks, I mean, I, I believe that the sidewalks are a valuable thing that we need to have downtown for safety reasons. And I felt like I was not being, felt like I was being disingenuous if I go to a legislator and ask for money for a specific purpose. She didn't make it restrictive, but I did go and ask for it.
It was your specific purpose, not hers, not what's in the state budget. And, and I don't wanna keep going over the same ground, but, but I, I'll just leave it at that. She stated that it could be used for any purpose, and you, Mayor Tally, said, "No, I don't want it to go for that purpose." And you closed down other members who were asking that that be considered, and said, "No, it's not gonna go for that."
Oh, I don't remember it that way. Uh, I remember going to getting it, getting the funding for the city so that the taxpayers didn't have to pay for the crosswalks, and I wanted to see that project through. And certainly Joey, I, how did Joey vote? Did he vote against it, or did he vote for it? I thought we all five members voted for it. So, I mean, I'm gonna advocate for my position, because I feel like that is what I was doing, and I didn't know at the time that, when I asked for the sidewalks, which was months and months and months earlier, that the issue with the Sesquicentennial Park even existed. Even after you came and brought that up, I went back to Gailey, asked for money this year for the Sesquicentennial Park, but all of that funding is going to Western Care Alum. And, you know, nothing would make me happier as if we could get additional funding, but there's none available. So how do we pay for it? I mean, we are, we are representatives of the community, and we want to do what the majority of the community wants. I do think the majority of the community wants crosswalks. I do believe that I hear from people on a weekly basis about, I almost got ran over crossing the street there with twenty-five thousand cars a day coming through there. I don't necessarily hear that about the Sesquicentennial being a safety issue. So I'm not saying that the Sesquicentennial Park is not important. It is, of course. I think, I'm, I mean, I've dedicated my life to historic preservation and trying to, in my employment, try to honor the history of Graham. But I'm not gonna, um, apologize for going and getting money from the state to put in crosswalks that we also need to, and I felt like that was a good thing. Um, it was, it was...
So, I have a, I have a question.
Done for a good reason.
City manager, have we gone to the county and asked for money to help support this? Since, I mean, it, it is for the county anniversary, right? So, why, why don't we go to the county and say, hey, help us pay for this?
We certainly can. I have not had any conversation with anyone from the county regarding that. I don't know if any elected officials on our board have had conversation with their elected officials, but I have not.
I mean, I know they might try to squirm out of it, but, you know, I mean, honestly, they should help pay. I, I think they should help fund it.
Paul's approach was on the original committee. And I think he said that that committee's now defunct and, you know, nowhere, I mean, the expense is way more than what the, even the original park cost. And I suspect that had anybody known that they were going to have to dig out a basement and refill it and tamp it, that we could have afforded it back then even.
Of course, like you said, it's been being discussed for what, nine years now? And now we're kind of at a point where we have to figure something out because it's, it's not safe anymore. So, and we can't just keep it blocked off forever. We gotta, we have to do something. We have to either find the funding, you know, somewhere or get the county to help us. As you said, state grants are not going to, not going to work, but there, maybe there are other avenues out there that we can look at. But, but we want people to bring their ideas to us and we want people to feel comfortable bringing the ideas. And then we don't want them to feel like they're, we're just going to shut them down if they bring something to us. You know, because we, we want to discuss all ideas.
Every idea is valuable.
Yes.
And we appreciate it. And I don't want anyone to feel hesitant to speak their mind or speak their opinion. We want to be receptive to all free speech that comes here as long as it's respectful.
Mr. Boni, you know good and well that this board has been the most transparent boards in a long time.
I'm afraid, Mayor Prokem Hall, I cannot necessarily agree with that, but I appreciate your, your statement. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. You have to come to the mic because it's recorded. So, they can't hear you when you're, when they're listening online.
I would like to reemphasize something about the brick sidewalk crossing. I remember when they were there and as you crossed it, they were just absolutely full of cigarette butts. It was so ugly. Is there not another way of making a crosswalk walk more attractive? If there's going to be one? I mean, I go between the lines now and, I mean, if people's not going to stop, they're not going to stop, you know?
I don't, I don't know how long ago that was, but we do have a street sweeper that comes through three times a week. So, I don't, I don't, I haven't seen that and I'm down there every day.
No, I'm talking about when it was brick.
No, I know, but I, I think maybe a street sweeper wasn't coming through there as often as. They come by three days a week. So, they're there every other.
Very, very ugly.
Isn't that correct? Yeah, I mean, I know they do. They're there three days a week, right? Because. Yes, thank you so much for being here.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. My name's Jill Bullis. I live at five hundred Wildwood Lane in Graham. I had not planned to speak tonight, but I've heard all the jumping around from crosswalks to sidewalks to the agenda item that we're on. So, I want to break it down to a sentimental, emotional standpoint for my family. I don't know the council member's history in Graham and how long you have lived here. I've lived in Graham since I was born, March ninth, nineteen sixty-five. My dear grandmother-in-law, who was my grandmother ever since I came into her family's life, was one of the tightest people in Alamance County. But she bought bricks for her children, her grandchildren, her great-grandchildren, and for her husband. And she bought those bricks to stay as a legacy in that park forever, not knowing that fifteen years later, we're going to have a sinkage issue. So, I really question when the park was built, why it wasn't properly analyzed. And while we can't go back in time, if you move the park, if the council votes to move the park, I want our family's bricks back to place at my home. I don't want my family's bricks relocated. And that's how I feel about that.
Appreciate your opinion. Thank you so much. Thanks for coming and speaking. Yes.
Well, I just want to make a rebuttal. I'm the one who brought thought up the half-baked idea. So.
It's not a half-baked idea.
I want to say, I sort of resent that comment, Mr. Boni, because no ideas are half-baked. And your job is to bring people in here to hear their views. As you've heard, all of these people, and I don't agree, disagree or agree with all of them, but I'm not insulting what they are saying. So, thank you for doing what you're supposed to do. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I want everybody to feel that they can express themselves and not be vilified in the paper or, or in front of your fellow citizens or whatever. We welcome comments. I remember someone coming many years ago, talking about, you know, they may, they had never been here, first time they'd ever come to a council meeting. And they said, well, you don't want people to speak. And I said, you got to be kidding me. We, we are, I feel like we do everything we can to try to make the best decisions we can because we do listen to what people say. We do want people to come and tell us what you want. And it's difficult sometimes to even get people to participate in meetings like this. So, I commend every one of you who showed up, took time out of your day to come down here to talk to us and give us your opinion. Every person was heard. Every person, I hope feels your, your feedback was valued and we appreciate you coming. The council, as far as I know, is not going to be making any decisions on this. We wanted to hear some feedback. I think it, my personal opinion is that I'd like for anybody, because there were several people that I heard from that said they couldn't be here tonight. I think maybe a good idea would be to put out something to the community to hear what their ideas are based on the information that we presented tonight. A lot of really good ideas. And I think ultimately, at the end of the day, the best decisions come out of listening to other people and then trying to put that all together and then making a good decision that we think that not everybody's going to like, but hopefully is reflective of our community. And I appreciate everyone caring about the Sesquicentennial Park and caring about the historic downtown. And we love what a quaint Graham is and we hope to keep it here for a very long time. And we appreciate, everyone on this council appreciates your support to that end. So, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing. Okay, all in favor? And again, thank you very much for being here tonight. We appreciate you being here. Next is going to be the public comment period. I believe we have Catherine Walker from Alamance County Transportation Authority here.
Hey, good evening. How are you? I'm doing well. I'm Catherine Walker with Alamance County Transportation Authority. And I came tonight to let you guys know that, starting October first, Alamance County Transportation Authority will be launching micro-transit, which is transportation that's akin to Uber or Lyft. Currently, you can call a day in advance and book a ride. But with the new app that we're launching, you'll be able to go onto the app and book these rides. And this will be specifically in Graham that we're launching it.
I am so excited about this. I don't know if Peter has told you, but in the past, I've been very critical of Lynx Transit and just us spending taxpayer dollars on things that, you just see the buses running all the time and they're always empty. And the idea being with ACTA, you go to somebody's home, pick them up and take them where they need to go, which is usually hospital and all that. So, that's such a much better business model.
Well, now, we are still doing that.
No, I know, I know.
And it's not just hospital or doctor's offices. We do general public transportation as well, so.
But I love the micro.
It's called micro-transit, but again, it's akin to Uber or Lyft.
Yes, my only concern, and I'll bring this up to Mr. Ward, is that you guys are trying to keep ACTA from being able to pick up in Burlington. And I have somebody that needs to be picked up in Burlington and brought to Graham. And I would like for them to be able to do that. And the very first thing I said was, he said, well, there's a link pickup location near his house or whatever. Like, he has, he has to walk, I don't know, about a mile or so to this pickup location. And he's like, I don't feel safe. This is a man telling me he does not feel safe riding the Lynx Transit. And I said, why is that? He said, well, I've had a couple incidents on there. So, I said, okay. So, he has to get somebody to drive all the way from Graham to come pick him up and drive all the way back to Graham and then find a ride again at night after his shift is over. And so, I just, I don't understand how legally Lynx can tell ACTA that they can't come pick up somebody in Burlington when the customer wants ACTA and not Lynx. Yep, so.
Mayor Tally, I'll give you my card after the meeting. Depending on the nature of the trip, we may be able to do that.
I think this is going to be very popular. I love this idea. I can't say enough good things about it. I appreciate you guys venturing out and doing this. I think this is going to be great for the community. And I, I just think this is great that you guys are offering a low cost. It'd be like two to.
Two dollars. Initially, it'll cost two dollars, but currently, our demand response rides booked a day in advance are fare-free. And we intend to remain fare-free for the foreseeable future. Now, these, we consider it a premium service, so two dollars will be charged. And we hope in December to launch another micro-transit zone in Meben. And trips between zones from Graham to Meben, Meben to Graham will be five dollars. But within its zone, those trips will be two dollars.
Rent to a family that has one car and they have three drivers. And it is, this is great for them. This is be great for them. And some people that are on, with the Housing Authority, be able to get back and forth where they're at. I think they don't have to walk to a bus stop.
Right.
And, and, and do that. And it's safe. ACTA is safe. I've never heard anybody ever complain about the safety of ACTA. I commend you. Thank you very much for being here. Appreciate you waiting through the night to be here. But yes, that's wonderful. I'm so glad that you're here. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, I am part of the ACTA group and Peter and all his staff do a wonderful job.
Awesome, and he's a Graham person.
He is a Graham person. And he lives not too far from me and Bonnie. But they, they go well over what they are required to do to make sure people have moved around. They have people coming in at four-thirty in the morning to start picking up people who have to go to the house.
Yes, I love it. I know it's so needed. It's so needed. I absolutely think this is going to be great. It was wonderful because, you know, when you put your loved one, your grandparent or your elderly family member on a bus, you want to feel that they're going to get there, arrive safely, not have any incidents. I mean, what happened in Charlotte on that transit bus is just.
It was horrible.
So disgusting and terrible and should never be happening in public transportation. And my understanding, he didn't even have a, he didn't, he didn't even have anything. No one was there to stop him from even getting on the transit bus. He didn't have a ticket, wasn't supposed to be there. And that, that girl did absolutely nothing wrong. And to the irony of her leaving Ukraine and then being killed in Charlotte on mass transit is just with people sitting this close. This close. It's, it's very sad. But we definitely appreciate what you're doing in the community. I think this is going to be very important. Please make sure you create a social, visible link to that app so that we can share it. Because I think this will be really good for Graham and Alamance County. Thank you very much for being here. We have, I don't believe there was any other public comments. And so, we'll ask for city staff comments. Anything, Bob, Brian, Aaron?
No, ma'am.
Okay, wonderful. Bobby, can we just talk about the events that are coming up? How good are these events?
Well, let's see. We got Thursday at seven, September eleventh. We got the Big C Concert Saturday the thirteenth. And we have the Kinfolk Concert on Saturday the twentieth. Every Saturday through September is moving the park at Bill Cook Park from seven-thirty to nine-thirty. Then we have Thursday at seven on the twenty-fifth. And then we have the Esperanza Festival on the twenty-eighth or twenty-seventh.
Yep, and we have the Graham Fall Festival that's coming up. That is a great event to go to. That has a lot, everybody's going to have stuff on sale. There's going to be big tent sales, things like that. Ten to four P.M. on Saturday, September the twenty-seventh. So, please come to that as well.
Where is that?
Downtown Graham. Thursdays at seven also will be going on as well. Graham, what is that? That's the. Yep, yep, this Saturday. Okay.
Got the Pumpkin Bash coming up at the end of October.
Pumpkin Bash as well, so please come out to that. But yeah, so appreciate everybody being here. The city council will consider going into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute's to consider the purchase of seventeen-seventy-one North Jim Mina Road and Hall River Parcel ID number one-five-two-five-five-one, owned by Thomas and Linda Stewart, adjacent to the Graham Regional Park, for the intended use of park and recreation facilities and to discuss potential litigation in accordance with NC General Statute's section one-four-three-three-one-eight-point-eleven-A-three. I need a motion in a second to go into closed session.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion. We go into closed session?
I second the motion.
All in favor? Yes.
Mayor, I just wondered if.
Sorry, can you say that again?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we come out of closed session.
A second. Madam Mayor, I make a motion.
And go back to open session.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Madam Mayor, I'm making a motion. Will you turn?
Um.
Second.
Yes, that's fine. Yes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.